Needs, actually, I would have liked to increase it even more because generally speaking, we are often able to carry over funds that, you know, we make use of in the summer months. But we're not going to be able to do that anymore. So.
Yeah. The paving may be the only exception.
I think paving was the only one.
But there's a lot of that that's needed, that's for sure.
Steve, on the snow remover, where are we this year?
Oh, we're having some minor icing up issues. We've had the one major storm. I think that storm cost us about eighteen thousand dollars. And we've probably chipped in probably another four or five, not counting materials, just manpower and hired equipment, so. And we just restocked our salt shed, so we're ready to go for the next one.
Yep. So, well, you know, if some of that money is not spent, we could possibly transfer it into paving.
Yeah, before the year end, yep. Yep, okay.
Steve, what is it now to pave? You know, and I'll leave it in your terms, a hundred feet or?
Well, just an example, the street just below us, Summit Avenue, which runs from Lawton and kind of dead ends, that's going to cost us pretty close to fifty thousand dollars before we're done. That's tearing it up and putting a base course and putting the top. So it doesn't go far. I can't give you a cost per mile or foot because sometimes it's resurfacing, sometimes it's full blown reconstruction and some of the roads are not then. We had to dig down three feet and remove loom and clay, and so it's really hard to judge what the cost is per linear foot, if you want to say.
But we all know that it's very expensive.
It's expensive.
And you don't get a lot for your money.
And it went from sixty-four dollars a ton in our last contract to seventy-three dollars a ton. So we lost fifteen percent of our buying power, basically, from our last contract to this one here.
Paving of our own parking lots, is that handled by your department as well?
What is that again?
Paving of our own parking lots, like, say, the police station parking lot or the fire station.
Yeah, well, that doesn't come out of my budget. I think the chief put in fifty.
But you do the work for those.
We do the work, yeah. Everything but laying the blacktop, you know. We do the excavation, we prepare everything and get it done as cheap as possible, but we can't put down the blacktop. That would have to come from our paving contractor.
Why would that come out of, why would, if the police department needs to repair their parking lot or driveway, why would that come out of their budget?
This is the police department.
Why would it come out of their budget?
Right.
Because it's the police department.
I understand that, but it's.
It's their parking lot, you know.
Well, it's not a public right of way, it's their parking lot.
Okay.
It's a cost center, it's their whole cost center.
Well, so it's all coming out of the same pot.
If it was, well, yeah.
So it's all a matter of which pocket you take it out, it's all the same.
If it was paving the street in front of the police department, then.
We would do it.
That would be him.
It's all out of the taxpayers' pocket.
Yeah, I mean, it is going out of what we label it, doesn't it, so?
Only for accounting purposes.
Well, yeah.
And audit.
Any questions on the operations account? Landfill closure, last year, the Budget Committee, we put the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand. The Budget Committee denied it as they calculated that, you know, the pay-as-you-throw was actually putting in more than the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, so they eliminated it. So assuming that they would eliminate it again, I did not include it, but.
Before Jay jumps in, I'm going to say.
That was my butt.
That we should put it back in, and because, number one, the whole premise, even with pay-as-you-throw, it was planned with this additional one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars for the long term to close that facility. And I'll let Jay, because I know he's been working on it.
Well, I'm going to try to make this as short as possible, and I'm glad Ed is agreeing with me. One of the economic, financial problems that we had three or four years ago was the fact that we were facing the issue of closing the landfill with a cost that's estimated, approximately the last cost estimate we got was about nine-point-seven million dollars. We quite simply didn't have the money. As a result of that, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, as some of you know, we did hire consulting engineers to get their input into this. Most of the work, I think, however, was done by the landfill committee that was appointed for this task by the town council at the time. Everyone, including the experts, our consulting engineers, as well as the landfill committee, proceeded on the assumption that we would be getting revenue from, one, the sale of the maroon bags that everybody's familiar with; secondly, the interest on whatever fund was gathering; and finally, that we would continue a budget appropriation of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars. And that budget appropriation was started some seventeen years ago. We now have some five million dollars in the fund, and we need nine-point-seven million. The program, the pay-as-you-throw program, and the formula that we're using was approved, it was recommended by our consulting engineers, approved unanimously by the landfill committee, and then approved unanimously by the town council. Right now, we need an additional four-point-seven million dollars. I've spoken to Mr. Bellucci, I've spoken to Mr. Goncalo, I've spoken to Denise Saret, to make sure that I have their best estimates based on what I call real-world experience. When this proposal first went to the town council, we were using estimates, or you could say guestimates, as to what the revenues would be and what we might need over the years. Mr. Goncalo, Mr. Bellucci can correct me if I'm wrong, but in my conversation with him, I think he was comfortable in suggesting that we could continue with the present landfill for another five to five-and-a-half years. Without going into a long history, this has in part been made possible by the fact that with the recycling program and the pay-as-you-throw program, we have far more recycling and we have far more trash going into the landfill. Mr. Bellucci's estimate was that we would need approximately, that we could have a life of another five to five-and-a-half years for the landfill. And for the closure period, and I'll have to make something of a distinction here, for the closure period, we would probably need about one-and-a-half to two years. That is, according to Mr. Bellucci's estimate, we would go for five to five-and-a-half years using the landfill as we now use it. And then we would have to go to direct hauling for another, for a period of two, one-and-a-half to two years while we were closing the landfill. Without trying to make this more difficult, two years of closure represents in revenue to us one year of regular operations. That is, when we go to direct hauling, the cost of our rubbish disposal here in the town will go up approximately fifty percent. That means we will have to take some of the revenue that we've been getting from pay-as-you-throw, the pay-as-you-throw program, and use that to offset the increased cost in the direct hauling to Johnston. So that, in a sense, two years of closure represents one year of actual operations. My bottom line is, and I'll try to move this along, is that if we proceed on the assumption that we have six more years, that is, by six years, I mean five years of full operations and two years of closure, which translates into one year, we would need approximately, for five years of operations and two years of closing, we would have to budget this year one-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars and continue that budget until the closing is complete. Using Mr. Bellucci's numbers of five-and-a-half years and possibly two years for the closing, it comes down to a budget per year of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, almost one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand. These numbers, I should point out, are based on the numbers that I got from Mr. Bellucci, who's right on top of all of these numbers. And I've also asked our town treasurer, Mrs. Saret, to work with me on the estimates for the interest that we're making on that fund. As a matter of common sense, we recognize that if we're making a hundred thousand dollars right now on the interest that we're getting from the fund, next year, that interest should be a hundred-and-ten-thousand. Year number two, it should be a hundred-and-eleven-thousand, and on and on through the seven years. The estimate, my estimate, is based on the numbers that I've received and some of the tweaking I'll have to do with Mrs. Saret, is that if we assume that there's five years of full operation and two years of closing time, we will have to budget, starting this year, at a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars. If it's five-and-a-half years, as Mr. Bellucci has suggested, we should be able to push it out, and two years of closing, we would need a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars, actually, rounded out to a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars, starting this year in this budget. And what I've done is tried to average that out, and it comes out to a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. It's interesting to note that after I did the averaging, and that is my averages, that we need a hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars at least every year put into the budget, that if we had in fact paid the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars last year, as we should have, we would only need this year one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars in our budget and going forward. I'm not even, at this point, I'm really speaking for myself as the liaison for the landfill committee. We have not had a meeting since this proposed budget was put out. But by the time of the next meeting of the landfill committee, I expect to have all of these numbers. As I say, I've confirmed all of these numbers with Mr. Bellucci, other than what I'll be working with, with Mrs. Saret on trying to figure out the interest. But that interest is not going to add a tremendous amount over the next five or six or seven I think, based on the numbers I'm using, and I'm really speaking for myself, not for the landfill committee, I certainly would recommend that we go back to the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars, but I'd actually be very comfortable averaging out the two numbers that I put forward, that is, the one-hundred-and-ninety-two and the one-hundred-and-thirty-two, which averages out to a hundred-and-sixty-two. Based on Mr. Bellucci's indications to me, that we should be able to push out the life of this landfill for five-and-a-half years and probably get DEM's consent to pushing out the closing time up to two years. So either number is a number that I'd feel comfortable with. But let me make it absolutely clear, I, whatever the landfill, whatever the Budget Committee may have decided last year, the truth is, if we don't do anything, in five or five-and-a-half years, whatever it is, we're going to have to tell the taxpayers in Tiverton, you have to come up with something in excess of a million dollars. And that's the bottom line. I'd be happy to share these numbers with anyone. I think Mr. Bellucci, have I accurately made, represented what you've told me and the numbers you've given me?
We're assuming a lot, I mean, but it's.
And it's.
They're backed up by some history and some numbers.
And I think it's important to keep in mind, these numbers were all given to us as guestimates at one time by Par Engineering, our consulting engineers. They were checked out carefully by the landfill committee, and they do work out. The original proposal was adopted by the town, previous town council unanimously, and if we had continued with the one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars, we would have had absolutely no trouble whatsoever meeting the cost of the nine-point-seven when it's going to be due, whether it's in five years or five-and-a-half years. So I am certainly going to urge that the landfill committee again recommend that we appropriate a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars every year for this landfill committee. And if we don't do that, at least we're being honest with the taxpayers and telling them in five or five-and-a-half years, be prepared to come up with something like one-point-one million dollars. Thank you, Mr. Robert.
Thanks, Mr. Lambert.
If I could just make one more comment. I will add the one-sixty-eight-three-oh-four, because that's a solid number that we've used for several years, and it's slightly above the one-sixty. But this may push us over the cap. That's all I'm, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to make all of these changes, the hard changes that we have so far, and then I'll give you an update.
Anecdotally, is the pay-as-you-throw program kind of maxed out in terms of what we would estimate be coming in from all the households in Tiverton? And/or do we forecast that revenue to increase over the next couple of years?
Well, I'll let Steve answer the question, but I'll tell you right now that the money we received for the last fiscal year was four-hundred-and-eighty-eight, this is the number you gave me, Steve, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
So that's what one-year revenue from the bag program generated.
Is that, I mean?
And it's roughly level.
Yeah.
You know, people tend to use the same number of rubbish bags in the family, so we expect that number to hold true.
Is that, yeah, that's cash in our pocket, that's not the whole?
That's cash in the pocket, yeah. That was from Denise, yep.
What's that number again?
Four-hundred.
Four-eight, Jay has it.
Four-eighty-eight-one-thirty-eight.
Four-eighty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item is stonewater management, that's level at seven-thousand. On-site wastewater management, they've requested an increase up to twenty-nine-thousand, and I have given them an additional twenty-five-hundred dollars. If there are any questions there, the superintendent is here. Okay. The wastewater facilities plan loan, payment one of three, we will need seventeen-thousand dollars to make that payment. Next year, year two, it'll go up to.
About a cent.
Seventeen-thousand?
Yes. That's one-third of the, we have to pay it back in three equal amounts.
Okay, and it was, of course, the fifty, fifty-thousand?
Yeah.
Rubbish and recycling, what's projected there is the CPI increase, whatever it may be.
That includes eight-yard waste pickups per year at fifty-four-hundred dollars per town-wide pickup.
Landfill operations has increased slightly due to salaries and related expenses and an increase of five-thousand dollars in the engineering testing permits. Building maintenance, the only increase we have there is in the salaries. And then town committees, they're all listed there. There's a slight increase in the Fort Barton Park maintenance, there's a six-hundred-dollar increase there. A two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase in the tree committee, and that's pretty much The increase there is primarily for this computer. And I'm going to let the senior center director talk to the computer. Sorry, you're so close to the last, but.
I was just trying to figure out where we were. It's a computer system, it's a system within itself. This is a sponsorship program at the cost of thirty-seven-hundred dollars. It's a, it's a tracking system for everyone who uses the senior center. Right now, we do everything by hand. And with this system, we'll get a monitor, and they'll have a little scan card. They can either hand punch in or use their scan card. They're coming in for lunch, for exercise, for whatever other activities are going on, and they will be able to punch in what they're in the building for. And this computer will generate all the reports that we need instead of having to tally everything by hand. There will be an annual maintenance service fee after the first year, and I believe that's fifteen-hundred dollars a year.
Is this part of a statewide computer system for senior services?
It's, it's not a statewide, all senior centers do not have it, and there are many others out there, but it's pretty much a national program that is used state.
Nationally to track.
Nationally to track the usage of the senior center. A lot of the state reports we have to generate, they look for unduplicated numbers, where right now, when I do a report for the town, I use the total number. It's just so hard to go through everything and break it down by one person.
Yeah.
You know, and this program will do that.
So you hypothetically recognize some productivity quote-unquote savings there in terms of your time?
It will be a time-saving product for me.
Yeah, it will also help you to determine what areas you need to focus more on.
Oh, sure.
Because it'll tell you who, what they're really using.
Exactly.
So you may have to increase, say, lunch and decrease.
Right.
Bricklaying, I don't know, whatever, you know, but.
But it will give you all the numbers by individuals versus totals. Right.
That's hardware and software, that purchase?
Yes.
Together?
And again, for us, for the town to purchase this, it would be, I believe it's up to about twelve-thousand dollars right now. But they've come up, because a lot of the communities right now are having financial problems, they've come up with these sponsorship programs, so they will go out and get the sponsors, I won't have to do any of that work, they will do it, and our cost will be thirty-seven-hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Any other questions on the senior center? Moving to recreation. There were some small differences. We're adding services for the summer program for the Bogamash Park. That's becoming the main recreation area of the town now. The, it's creating more activity than the town farm, but it's well worth it. We have a slight, very slight increase in the mowing services. We have a new contract, which will go for three years with two-year option, two one-year options.
Can I just ask a question, and I'll direct it to Steve? Hi, Steve. Hi, Steve.
Was that again?
I just have a question. We're talking about the mowing services.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why DPW can't mow?
Yeah, our machine, our machine is too big and it can't cut that fine level of a ball field or a recreational field. Ours is really rough, rough cutting, to tell you the truth. We don't have a fine cut machine.
And don't ask me to buy one.
But, yeah, I don't have to buy one. But again, there's a lot of fields in town, too. I hope people start to maintain all the fields that the.
Yeah, there's quite a few. And they need to be mowed weekly in some parts, sometimes a year.
That would be an interesting thing to look at, to see what the actual cost would be to us if we were to do it ourselves.
Would you need to buy equipment for? We'd need to maintain the machine, we'd need a man, we'd have to pay his benefits.
Put him in a truck or a trailer.
And then, when we don't need him in the winter, we'd have to pay his unemployment.
Why couldn't it be somebody who's already on staff?
Somebody, well, we'd have to take a man away from something else. We don't have extra people.
I would be interested in just the ballpark of what it would cost.
While we're talking about kind of parks and recreation, do we supply any kind of funding assistance to the town, sport leagues, like?
No.
Well, we left them use the fields for free.
Okay. And we maintain the fields.
We maintain them.
Okay. We use to?
And things like that.
Use soccer, the whole nine yards, okay.
But they never, they became very self-sufficient and didn't, you know, stop the requests?
Sure. Okay, great.
That's it.
Okay. Just as an aside, this is just a preliminary budget, and obviously, I think now that we've gone through it, everybody can take a hard look at it again. This is, you know, basically so we have something to go forward with, it's not locked in stone, budget is not finalized by any stretch of the imagination. Overall, I think Jim's done a good job. I would like to see some savings in some areas, you know, but we'll take that up as we go forward. And I'm sure with working with the Budget Committee, that may also, there may be some cuts there also that may come forward. But I think overall, for those of us who've been on for a while, I think it's the first time in a long time that we've actually gone through, you know, the entire budget.
Were we going to vote on this and send it to the Budget Committee? No, actually, we.
We'd ask for revisions first, don't we?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to talk about it.
Mr. President, before we just wrap up, I know it's really late, I did have a question or kind of wanted to pose something in terms of the revenue side of things. And this is in regards to the receipts we receive at Grinnell's Beach and Foggland Beach. Our family frequents Foggland Beach quite a bit in the summer, so I'm there quite a bit. And over the last couple of years, I think that we've seen a significant increase in the just volume of out-of-state plates that are frequenting. If they're at Foggland, they have to be at Grinnell's as well. We maintain, it's five dollars for an out-of, you know, a single use for an out-of-towner, you know, non-resident. I'd really like to propose seeing that increase at least to ten dollars for a non-town resident, which would hypothetically double the amount of revenue we receive there and allow us to potentially, if we wanted to, start to look at potentially allocating funds to improve those kind of waterfront resources for the town, or even at a minimum, get some trash pickup down at Foggland. I don't know what the process would be. I don't know what the process would be.
Public hearing on twenty-eighth on fee schedule.
And I will talk to the Recreation Commission about increasing those fees.
I mean, if you look around at surrounding communities, non-resident fees, I mean, way higher than...
That's...
Yeah, I mean, even ten dollars, I mean, it could be a multi-year plan where we get it up to fifteen... You know what I mean? But even just a hundred percent increase, moving that five to ten dollars per visit?
Is that something we set, or is that something we dole to the pressure?
Well, we would impose it when we set the fees.
Amended at that...
But we set the fee, I mean, right? The council...
The council does via ordinance.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Well, it's taken out of ordinance. That's why we don't have to go into each part of the code anymore. Now it's just a resolution by resolution of fee structure.
But I think it's just...
And we do it annually, and it happens to be coming up. It was just advertised for the public hearing. It's coming up on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, so.
Okay.
I think it's just courtesy, though, to...
Yeah, yeah, actually.
To get the Recreation Commission involved.
Recreation has... It's next Tuesday. Oh, well, there you go. It's next Tuesday.
I mean, I'm happy to... I'm not... I can't remember who the liaison... Oh.
So you could address it with them.
Yeah. Yeah. Let me know if you need any support there with that.
You want to, right? Are you... No, just me.
You were the only person to volunteer.
I haven't.
He gave it to me.
That's right. He gave it up.
Yeah, deming it next Tuesday.
That may not be a good sign.
All right. Okay. Entertain a motion to send a provisional budget...
With the changes that we discussed.
With the changes that we discussed to the Budget Committee.
Some of...
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor? Suppose motion carries?
I think it was a good night.
No?
No.
Thank you.
And it's only first pass. It's only provisional.
We still have something to talk about on Thursday.
Yes. And...
We got a base.
I think a lot of us have a better knowledge.
Yeah. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?